Next year today when I come back.
Well, I was.
I'm certainly.
Yeah.
I'm sure I am.
Well, definitely.
I'm like definitely.
Didn't say mean.
I didn't say so.
All right.
So.
And you had to do it two months in a row.
I'm like, I'm like. I didn't see this.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta.
It will be the final private draft.
Of course.
That's our objective.
I just.
You're playing Garrett.
Yes. In both of them somewhere.
Seeing things pull out and form themselves. Most of it's bad. Yes, sir. Most of the work we're doing is high one by accident. Uh, most of them are ongoing. It's, uh, practices. To the evaluation which has, uh, been answered. Sands, all the people who work with us. Remand. That's just a guy. It's so donkey like you're married to me. Like an interesting. They thought that.
It is. He's got. We're going to. Team. I guess. Question stuff. Now, let's. Help. He's so.
Legalist. How does that? Not possible.
Let's.
I just saw.
You must. Sure.
Yeah. That was. This is party time.
Hello.
Sorry. That was not. I can help. I guess you were shocked when you said. But.
A lot of.
Exactly. Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the town council regular meeting of Monk's Corner, May twenty first, twenty twenty four. Our invocation will be done by Jonathan Vaughn, Pastor of Santee Circle Church of God.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, Creator of all things, Defender of the weak, and wisest of all council, as we look at a world with growing divisiveness, anger, and fear, we ask for your blessing to be on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not first ask how do we fix this, but to whom we depend on? How might we need to change? And to whom do we listen? Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our brother, our sister, and throughout the ages, prophets have called leaders of communities to respect and protect the least among them, namely children, the elderly, the poor, the hungry, those with no homes, those who are ill in mind, body, and spirit, the strangers, the forgotten, those who are alone, and countless others. Remind us that we are not only leaders but servants, that our responsibility is to serve you and be an extension of heaven's hands and feet to a world in need. We pray today for open mindness, that we'll be more careful and thoughtful to listen to alternative points of view and find collaborative solutions that benefit all people. We pray for patience to preserve and to hope to sustain us through these tough and turbulent times. We pray for continued protection and equal opportunities for all people to enjoy constitutional freedoms and enjoy life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness as the core values of our nation. We pray for peace in a world during uncertain chaotic times. Let us find time to think about that which is good and reflect with gratitude all that we have been given in our life, our family, friends, faith, and community. Let us look forward to a world where people use their time and talents not to divide and ridicule, but for innovation, advancement, and endless possibilities. As we make these reflections, bestow health and happiness on our community. Help us to complete the mission to make this community a place of hope, helping other people every day. Help us to raise within our communities the next generation of leaders and thinkers with a strong calling to make this world a better place. Allow us to continue to use our time, talents, and treasure to make a difference and grant these council members, their staff, their families, the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak, yet listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. Fill us with your grace, oh God, as this chamber will make decisions that will affect this community and continue to remind us that all we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you in service to humanity. May we be guided by the spirit of unity, justice, love, and peace. We pray this in the name that is holy and sacred above all names, the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord, whose name is like no other. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Now, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and since I didn't ask, I'll lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few proclamations. We're gonna start with the National Tennis Month. Is anyone in attendance for that? Okay. On May twenty first, whereas on May twenty first, eighteen eighty-one, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals, at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over seven hundred thousand members from every corner of the country. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through its USTA adaptive grants. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than two twenty-one point six million Americans played tennis in twenty twenty, an unprecedented twenty-two percent increase in participation over twenty nineteen and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in two thousand seven. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of the town of Monk's Corner of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Hamilton, Jr., Mayor of the Town of Monk's Corner, South Carolina, proclaim May twenty twenty-four as National Tennis Month and hereby urge our citizens of Monk's Corner to become aware and support National Tennis Month. Our next proclamation is going to be for Mental Health Awareness Month. Do we have anyone here? Can you come up to the podium? All right. Proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-four. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with mental illness, and whereas one in twenty adults experience serious mental illness, and whereas the rate of unemployment is higher among U.S. adults who have mental illness, seven point four percent compared to those who do not, four point six percent. And whereas high school students with significant symptoms of depression are more than twice as likely to drop out of compared to their peers. Whereas twenty-one point one percent of people experiencing homelessness in the U.S. have a serious mental health condition. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to fourteen and the third leading cause of death among those aged fifteen to twenty-four in the U.S. And whereas suicide is the twelfth leading cause of death overall in the U.S. And whereas forty-six of the people who die by suicide had a diagnosed mental health condition. And whereas Berkeley Community Mental Health Center, a division of the South Carolina Department of Mental Health and its eighty-five employees, provides comprehensive mental and behavioral health care to more than three thousand Berkeley County citizens annually. We believe that every Monk's Corner and Berkeley County resident can make a difference in bringing awareness to those caring for or living with mental illness. For too long, mental and behavioral health illnesses were silenced and misunderstood. This proclamation brings forth valuable information in an effort to reduce stigma and give a voice to our fellow citizens who need our support. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thomas J. Hamilton, Jr., and members of the town council of Monk's Corner, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Town of Monk's Corner. As the mayor, I also call upon all Town of Monk's Corner citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. And I have a copy of the proclamation. If you would like to come up and come up please and.
Yes.
Picture.
Yes, sir. Here. Oh, I'm sorry. Get in the middle, yes.
Rebecca will keep me straight.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Did you, did you wanna say a few words? You're more than welcome to.
Well, if I may, you know. The person standing beside me is Kayla Bennett. Kayla Bennett's a clinician with the Berkeley Community Mental Health Center, and she's embedded in the Monk's Corner Police Department with Chief Young and his staff. And what Kayla does is Kayla responds to the community for those that are experiencing criminal domestic violence or interpartner, interpartner abuse to stop the cycle of recidivism. The proclamation for, uh, May being Mental Health Awareness Month really only goes so far as you all in this room share the information. So what I would encourage each of you to do is to tell three people over the next three days the things that you heard today. You can tell them that recovery is real and treatment works, and it works at the Berkeley Community Mental Health Center, that one in five of your fellow citizens, family members, countrymen will have a mental health need this year. Every eleven minutes, one of our countrymen died by suicide. Happened this weekend, happens now. In the time that both proclamations have been read, there have been one suicide in the United States in the last eleven minutes. By the time this council meeting ends, I shudder to think how many of our countrymen died by suicide. That is how we stop stigma. That is how we bring people to mental health care. Share those three things with the next three people that you see over the next three days. Treatment's real. One in five of us will need care every eleven minutes of countrymen dies by suicide. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on the proclamations, we have a very special person with us tonight. Rebecca, as we call her, Becky Ellison, former recreation director. If you and your family wants to come up. Come on up. Make, make it where you have the room. Look at the grandbaby. All right. Whereas Rebecca Becky T. Ellison proudly served the Town of Monk's Corner as the Athletic Director from January second, twenty eighteen, to April fifteenth, twenty eighteen. She was then appointed and served as Recreation Director on April sixteenth, twenty eighteen, until her departure, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas during her six-year tenure, she demonstrated exceptional leadership, commitment, and passion in the development, growth, and success of the recreation department. She was a positive role model, improving the lives of children and their families during her service to the town and community. She used her love of sports as a tool to mentor and encourage children to be successful in their life experiences and careers. And whereas her visionary leadership has led the development of numerous initiatives that have brought joy, unity, and a sense of belonging to our community, whether through the establishment of innovative youth programs and enhancements of public parks or the organization of memorable events, Becky has left a lasting mark on the fabric of our community. And whereas Becky shared her vision and worked closely with town officials in the development of the multimillion-dollar home telecom Miracle League field, which provides recreation league for exceptional children and adults in Berkeley County, and raised more than a million dollars from donors, large and small, including more than four hundred thousand dollars in CDBG grants from Berkeley County. And whereas Becky Tarisely served our community fostering a culture of recreation and leisure, working above and beyond to meet the challenges of changing times to make our community a better place. During her tenure, the department she oversaw grew to include twelve programs with more than fifteen hundred participants, supervising thirty-five full-time and part-time employees and over two hundred and fifty temporary employees and volunteers. And now therefore, I, Thomas J. Hamilton, Jr., Mayor of the Town of Monk's Corner, County of Berkeley, and State of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May twenty first, twenty twenty-four, as a special day to recognize Becky Ellison for her loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Monk's Corner. Counsel and I extend our personal best wishes upon her departure and express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the exemplary service rendered by Becky as the former recreation director. May God continue to bless you and your family.
All right. There we go.
I would just like to say, um, first, thank you to my family. I'm very fortunate that I have a supportive husband that didn't mind me standing out at the fields till nine or ten or whenever it was at night. He, he was there. He coached teams, and I'm sure he probably would still coach some teams as well. But, uh, you know, same with my boys and my parents and my daughter-in-law and special granddaughter. So, uh, I appreciate the support of my family, and I thank you all for that. Mayor and council and Administrator Lord, I just thank you all very much for believing in me to lead this recreation department. And we have a phenomenal team, a recreation staff. We work, we work very well together, and, and this venture, um, allowed me to grow innocence to, for my next adventure at St. John's Christian. And, uh, I appreciate everything and all the support that y'all have given to me. So thank you very much.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Council retreat for physical year twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, goal-setting overview. Administrator Lord?
Um, if I can, um, do my report before that? Or did you wanna do marriage report?
You got that one. Okay. I'll go ahead and do my marriage report. Um, I had a very busy, thank you, past month. Thursday, April eighteenth, I attended the Taste of Berkeley, which was my first time. It was a very good event, and it definitely goes to raise, um, money for scholarships. So if you haven't done it, I would, I would encourage you to go. April twenty-fifth, I spoke at the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce meeting at Charleston Southern University with other mayors from Berkeley County. On the twenty-sixth, I attended Career Day at Monk's Corner Elementary School. I learned that you bring hand sanitizer, 'cause I got sick. April twenty-seventh, I attended coffee with a cop at Starbucks with the women and men of the Monk's Corner Police Department. It's a great way to go out and meet our community. Thursday, May second, I was invited to the Berkeley County Economic Luncheon at Cypress Gardens. Councilman David Dennis was also in attendance. Also on May second, I was invited to the framing party for the Berkeley Children's Advocacy Center, Advocacy Center. Councilwoman Lloyd and Councilman Law was also in attendance. May seventh, I had an introductory meeting with Superintendent Dr. Anthony Dixon and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Whitley at the Berkeley County School District. Also on May seventh, I attended the first meeting of the Berkeley County Green Space Committee alongside Administrator Lord. May eleventh, I assisted with the food giveaway at Town Hall with the Monk's Corner Police Department and Monk's Corner Fire Department, another great event to get to know our community. On May fifteenth, I was honored to attend the presidential investiture of our own Judge Shaheena Bennett. It was truly my honor to welcome the Chief Justice of the South Carolina Supreme Court, Donald Beatty, to Berkeley County and to be a small part of a special honor. Also on May fifteenth, I attended the Lions Club meeting at Gilligan's and talked about what it means to be the Low Country's hometown and the opportunities Monk's Corner offers to businesses and residents. May seventeenth, I attended and presented the graduates of the nineteen fifty-eight Berkeley Training High School senior class with a proclamation in honor of their sixty-sixth class reunion celebration. Saturday, May eighteenth, I attended to show support for the Callan Lacy Shelter Color Run Five K at the Recreation Complex. We also wrapped up our spring Miracle League season. I wanna thank all the children, parents, and volunteer buddies who participated. Our recreation staff goes above and beyond to keep all of our recreation going. All in a one day, we can have football, Miracle League, soccer, baseball, softball. They do an amazing job. I am amazed at how much these kids have touched me personally, and I can't wait till the fall where we can get out there and do it all over again. And on Monday, May twentieth, I participated in a ribbon cutting for the Public Defender's Office right here in Monk's Corner. Our future events, June first, the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, Monk's Corner Police Department, and Goose Creek Police Department will partnership with the Bradley Blake Foundation to hold the twenty twenty-four Tri-County Orange Walk. Lineup will begin at the Monk's Corner Recreation Complex at seven AM. Friday, June seventh, the town will host the Jazz and Art Show in the Park from six to eight PM at Unity Park on Main Street. Local artists will display their work, and music will be provided by the Berkeley High School Jazz Ensemble. And on June tenth, from eleven AM to four PM, the Monk's Corner Fire Department and Monk's Corner Police Department will sponsor the Battle of the Badges. The department who brings in the most donors will win a trophy. Donors will also receive a free T-shirt while supplies left, and that's a, a blood donation. So you gotta pick fire department or police department. Saturday, June twenty-ninth, the town will hold their annual Fourth of July celebration from six to ten PM at the Monk's Corner Regional Recreation Complex. The Custom Four and Friends will be playing alongside with a full-code entertainment. There will be food trucks, vendors, kids' activities, fireworks, and more. Finally, as always, I have taken phone calls, emails, and texts and met with numerous citizens throughout the month. That concludes my report. Administrator Lord?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be mayor and council. A few things. First, I'd like to start with a special welcome to Ms. Livirance at her first, uh, council meeting as her new recreation director. Very glad to have her in the room. Well, certainly she'll be standing on the shoulders of Ms. Ellison, who's, who's just now leaving us. I'm sure that she's gonna help take that program even further and further, uh, as we, as we continue to grow. Wanted to give you a couple of updates. The, um, the design for the, uh, Lacy Park and Pickleball Courts is ongoing. Engineers have completed their surveys, and we've seen some preliminary designs, and so, um, they're, they're working on that process. So it's moving forward. These things never move as fast as you would like, but, you know, as long as you're moving forward, that's, that's a good thing. The playground, uh, that we received a one million dollar grant for, uh, for the, um, uh, their, to replace the existing playground and rec, rec, um, complex, uh, that design is nearly done. It's gonna include parking lot, uh, pavilion, bathrooms. It's also gonna have additional shade structures and parking that will be bid as alternates. So depending on how bids come in, uh, you can decide whether or not you wanna grow or constrain the project, uh, to meet the legislation expectation. But, um, the vendor for the equipment has been selected and, um, that they're doing finalized, and we're expecting to be able to bid that project in July. So very excited to be able to move forward with that. Thanks for the hard work of Mr. Westbrook. We've applied for the SS four A grant. Uh, this is a grant to do the townwide traffic study. So that we got the grant in, and I think November is when we hear back on that. But, uh, a lot of thanks for the work, uh, that he put into getting that grant done on time. Uh, we are also working on a grant, uh, through the TAP Program, Transstation Alternates Program, uh, TAP Program to pay for the construction of the sidewalk, uh, that's designed to go along R.C. Dennis and Stone Landing Road, connect the school and the neighborhoods and, and all those, uh, businesses along there. That's gonna be in two weeks. Uh, so we're in the final preparations of submitting that grant application. Your audit reports are in. They should be in your packet. Uh, unfortunately, our auditor could not be here to do the presentation that you're used to, so I will give you a very abbreviated version. If you'll turn to page one twenty-five. This is the summary of results, uh, and it says everything you want an audit to say. This is the summary of results, and it says everything you want an audit to say. It's unmodified, there are no findings, no deficiencies, and everything looks good. So, there's a lot more detail in our report, as you are familiar. So, if you have any questions about anything, I'm more than happy to talk to you about it, but we did want to present it to you and let you know that it's a completely clean audit report. Also this year, because of federal grants that we received, we had to do what's called a single audit, which is a much more in-depth audit to, for, because of the federal funding that we received, and everything was where it should be, and, and no findings or discrepancies there either. So, great, clean audit report. That concludes my report, and we're happy to answer any questions that Councilmen have.
I'd like to take, take a moment to commend Chief Young and his staff for those weekly reports that you've been sending out. They are invaluable, and you making sure that we're up to date with anything that goes on in the town of Monks Corner, and we appreciate everything you do with that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to Administrator Lord for the council retreat for physical year 2425, goal-setting overview.
Yes, so, Mayor and Council, y'all met. We all met at Wednesday, March 27th, to do the retreat. This is the free-budget meeting workshop where council gets to do goal-setting. This isn't deciding what's going to be in the budget, but this is deciding what the priorities are, so that when we develop the budget and present it to you, we know what's important to you, so we can make sure that it's included. So, the results of that are in your packet. I've got a quick summary. The must-do list was expanding Fire Station 1, the Lacy Park improvements, which I told you that those designs are moving along, and then establishing a capital fund for the Wellness Center. Also, under the must-do list was the generator for the Public Service Building and the Pickleball Courts, which again are currently under design. So, some of those are already underway, and others will need to program in, in the next year's budget. Another should-do would be the IT position, some renovations in Town Hall to open up some office space, and to look at construction of a new Town Hall facility or something for the Police Department. So, that's something that we'll begin exploring, working with architecture firms and kind of plan a path forward for y'all to be able to make a decision on that in the future. Also important was the Inclusive Park, which again is underway. Two positions, traffic positions in the Police Department, an impact fee study, which Mr. Westbrook has already started doing his due diligence and getting that started, and then incentive pay for the Fire Department, which Chief Gass has already also started that process as well. Under the could-do was the UDO, which it will be next after we finish the comp plan, which will be here in the second reading tonight. And then the Town Center Project, continue to find a partner so that we can do that, but look at also what we can do to improve pedestrian signage and parking in the downtown area when we do that. And the final one would be the construction of Fire Station 3. So, also important was adding two more patrol officers. This is, you know, different and distinct from the traffic officers, so together that would be four officers. Employee longevity, employee longevity pay, which we've already implemented since the meeting, and then replacement gear for the firefighters and the new water machine. So, you'll see a lot of these come back in the, in the budget as we move forward. Right now, the department has, are drafting their budget request, and they'll have them to me, they'll have them to Ms. Level this week, presumably, and then she'll get them to me, and then we'll start working on it, and then hopefully have a balanced budget to present you. There are many other items that were discussed, and I'm not going to go over them here, but they're already in the packet listed in the report. So, if everything looks good, I would like a, of a council to adopt this as a program of work going forward.
Anyone have any questions for Administrator Lord? I have a motion to approve the goals that discussed for physical year 2425.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? New business. There is no new business to be brought before council. Old business. These first three ordinances are the same as from last month. Second reading and public hearing, an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Parks and Recreation of the Town of Monks Corner, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Second reading and public hearing, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 3, Offenses Against Property of the Town of Monks Corner, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading and public hearing, an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-1 and Section 10-9G, and adopt the language contained therein, all relating to peddlers, charitable solicitors, buskers, and panhandlers, and to repeal Chapter 20, Article 4, Section 20-107, and its entirely, entirely of the Town of Monks Corner Code of Ordinances. At this time, we'll have the public hearings. Anyone here to speak on this matter? Public hearings are closed. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Second reading and public hearing, consider a conditional zoning map amendment, CZ-24-01, request for one parcel, TMS 142-00-01-012, totaling 15.75 acres located on Heatley Street from R2 Single Family Residential to ZZ R2 Conditional Zoning Single Family Residential to allow up to 37 dwelling units. Justin, can you give us a little?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. As we mentioned, this property is currently zoned, single-family R2. I'm kind of going to speed through this. It should be a lot of recap. We do have some new information from the last month's meeting. So, R2 is roughly 8,500 square foot property lines or parcels. This is the property in question, outlined in red. You have Heatley Street to the north, 17A to the northwest of the property. You can see it's zoned R2 primarily around there. There is some C2, general commercial. The property due west of this comes into play in a little bit. That's the home of Red Electric, otherwise known as Boko Family LLC. Adjacent, you know, you saw on the zoning map, again, you have Berkeley County Alternate School to the north and most single-family attached, along with the electrical contractor that I mentioned. Permitted uses in single-family R2 is primarily residential in nature. There's a couple of outliers there, but the conditional zoning is not looking to change any of that. That being said, one of the keys that came up in the research through this with Planning Commission, as well as y'all's first reading, is Newell Street cuts through the middle of this property. Through my own research, I can't find where Newell is a dedicated public road. Berkeley County maintains it, but there are no rights to that. That comes into play for a couple of different reasons. One, obviously, Red Electric does use that for another portion of their business. As you can see, the road continues onto Red's electric property, as well as a single-family house that is off-site here. Also, what happens when the neighborhood gets put in? They do plan on rerouting or reorganizing Newell Street. Obviously, Red's electric uses some fairly large trucks to get to the rear of their property. Do we want that on a residential street? Future-wise, obviously, Monks Corner is looking to have infill development. What does that do with connectivity? Obviously, Heatley and 17A has some issues. Heatley and Newell has some issues. We're looking to provide alternative routes for the current residents, so they can ingress and ingress their neighborhood safely without having to go through one choke point or one point of access. And so, what we did is we approached the developer. This was the plan. You can see it kind of tail ends. This is planned, the north is to the left, east is up north or facing up. You can see cul-de-sac with that easement. Well, again, easement doesn't really serve a purpose with big box trucks and things of that nature, and what, what does this do when infill property to this further south develops? So, we approached the developer and said, hey, why don't you try a conditional zoning? What the town would like to see is an extension of the right-of-way to the property line. What that does is, should anything in the future develop, we now have a nice road connection. We don't have to go to an HOA and buy the land, you know, due to eminent domain or anything like that. It's basically planning for the future. Our ordinance requires that these connections be made where possible, and at the time, we were not aware of the, of the growth pressures at that moment, but we are now in cognizant of that. Developer was aware of this and stated we'd be interested in conditional zoning. Now, what that means is they would reduce the lot size down to 6720. And some of the things that we were interested in doing, as you can see on the thing, neighborhood revitalization, their, their voluntary contribution to our fund, they're looking to add a type B yard along the east side, plan north against the adjacent neighbors on Mary Mac, something we were not going to get with by right zoning. They were looking at off-site traffic calming devices, particularly on Mary Mac. Trail open space and playground. There's a trail here along with the playground. Connectivity, that's important. That gives them a little bit of 360, I believe that's what that says, reduction in lot size, as well as dedicated crosswalk, or decorative crosswalks and on, off-street parking. So, with this negotiation that conditional zoning serves, staff was able to benefit the existing neighbors, help maintain connectivity in the future, make sure we have that ace up our sleeve. But, one of the questions in our, our first hearing that we heard about was, what does this do for Reds or Boko Family? And that was a point of contention that we wanted to get down to the bottom of. So, this is the new plan. Obviously, you can see the Newell Street reorganization. You can see the road now extends to the Reds electric property. It's adding up to 7, in conferring with the developer. Fiscal, or financially or dimensionally, they'll probably only get 36, but their request is for 37. An increase of 30, which is what they could do by right, but still 7 is significant to some, and, and with these benefits through the negotiated products, process with town staff and the developer, we feel that this is very fair. Again, regardless of by right, the developer will be able to do a TIA. That is on track. We're looking at mid-June, early-June, when the traffic engineer will get that back to us. They're looking at all the different intersections in this area, not just intersections that touch this property. We're looking at Newell and Heatley, Heatley and 17, and other ingress-egress points with this property. So, we're making sure through a third-party traffic engineer that the town's future traffic demands and this development don't clash, or at least mitigating factors are put in place by the developer to make sure that doesn't happen. So, one of the suggestions in working with the developer, Administrator Lord and myself, as well as the property owners of Boko Family Electric, was what options can we have to make sure you can still utilize the southern end of your property? And one solution that was presented to us was they do have property that front 17A further down from their main entrance. You can see in yellow. And the goal was, through the yellow line, to get to the area that is a different aspect of their business. Currently, they use the red, but that's going away, obviously with the ability for that road to handle it with the new residents, but as well as the residents, right? New residents don't really want to see 18-wheelers or box trucks coming down the road in the middle of the night to pick his stuff up. So, this, this kind of serves two points. It helps an existing, future residents, but it also helps our existing businesses that we value here. So, by right versus conditional zoning. By right, they can do up to 12, 30 units. Conditional zoning with what's requested, max 37, but they get all of those different aspects I've already covered. The 2017 comp plan does identify this as residential medium density, which I believe this is a little over 2.2 dwelling units per acre. So, that is prime within that median density. Four to eight dwellings is actually a little high, so this is under what the comp plan would call for, so it's a higher and better use for the town's perspective. You can see, most of it is, is covered with that orange circle, which is the medium density, but that lighter shade is the lower density. So, again, falls in line with that. It is harmonious with two of the land use policy and goals of our current comp plan, the 2017 plan, which we will get into later tonight, but staff does feel it conflicts with one of them. Staff's concerns was on-street parking looked like. They have provided a plan that shows additional on-street parking. Access to adjacent properties not officially resolved. As of tonight, there is an agreement, which was one of the conditions, I believe, Councilmember Law requested of staff, and I know Councilmember Swetman was also integral on that part, to see what we could do to make sure Boko Family and D.R. Horton or the developer were on the same page. In my hand, I do have a signed agreement by all parties. Now, the goal of staff is to say that all parties are happy. The details of that is left up to Boko and D.R. Horton, but I do have an executed copy of that. And I've talked to both the owner of Reds Electric and D.R. Horton, and it seems like there's a path forward for them. There is a new condition in your ordinance that states that that executed agreement shall be in place, and I believe construction is in the agreement being, under construction at the time that Newell Street's realigned. So, we want to make sure that we do have some triggers and mechanisms in place to protect all parties, including the town. That being said, Planning Commission did hear it. They had very similar concerns, but they did recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I know the applicant, Davis McNair from D.R. Horton, is here, as well as a representative from Boko Family Electric, or, I'm sorry, Boko Family LLC and Reds Electric. I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to you opening up the public hearing or talking with the applicants, if y'all would like.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Now that we have Red and the developer satisfied, what about the existing resident at the end of Newell Street? Are they going to be landlocked now?
No.
Or they're, they're okay?
There is an agreement in the ordinance, I believe. It specifically calls out there is an access easement to be provided for this, and I believe, and, and I would leave this to D.R. Horton about exactly what that looks like and entails, but all parties involved agree to provide access to that single-family residence.
Okay.
That was the area right off the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes, yes. It's, it was to the east, east of the easternmost cul-de-sac.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Oh, yes, sir.
So, to the right of the yellow.
It's right here.
Okay, okay.
And they do currently use Newell, but with this agreement, along with protections that D.R. Horton's willing to provide, and staff will make sure we get, they will have access forever.
And those residents, they're okay with?
I, I would, I would defer to D.R. Horton, but I'm pretty sure there's an agreement in place with that resident and D.R. Horton.
I would like to, just really don't have a question, have a statement. I went out to the Mary Mac area. I've talked to three different homeowners. Of course, nobody wants any development, but that's not going to happen. But, when I explained to them the 30 compared to what we're getting for them in the area, they all understood. So, I would like to commend Justin, Jeff, and, and the developer and Reds for all working together to try to get this done in the best way for the town and the residents of Monks Corner. I appreciate it. Anything else? At this time, I'm going to open it up as a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
I want to make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to have some discussion on this.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Any discussion?
I want to just go on record as saying a couple of things. First of all, I'm, I have said this before, I am concerned about the amount of houses on that corner, the amount of residences going there. I do appreciate that the developer has reached out to the surrounding property owners and actually worked out an agreement to make everybody's life a little bit easier, not just come in and build. We have a by right of 30 homes, as Justin mentioned, and so this is a fair resolution between all parties. And again, you know, that's something that I certainly want to go on record as saying, you know, we have looked into this extensively as council and feel that this is the best position for us to take at this time. So, I do appreciate everybody working together on that. I would ask also, Mr. Mayor, for us to take a roll call vote on this, which would include your vote as well, please.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? None? All those opposed, none, this passes. That's the first time I've ever done a roll call. All right. Now we'll go to second reading and public hearing. Consider the 2024 update to the town's comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir. This is also a public hearing. Sorry for the delay, but I think we have a good plan here. In the audience is Wyatt Stitley from the Berkeley Charleston Dorchester Council of Governments, who has been our partner with this, our consultant. This should be a brief update. We've, I told Wyatt, thirty slides, I can't count that high, so get it down. So he's agreed to get it down to ten. But it's just the changes. It's nothing that's, it's really nothing significant that's been added since the last review by council and staff. He does have two volumes here that's important to note. Usually where I come from, comp plans are just one big document. The COG was a little progressive in the fact that they want to separate it into two volumes. Volume one is the plan itself. That is the goals of the town for the next five to ten years required by state law. And the volume two is our existing conditions. And that breaks it up and makes it a little bit more palatable or digestible is probably a better phrase to use, where the existing conditions are what we've seen, what we, where we see our growth going, or the statistics and where we've been. So we're getting a before-after shot of what we anticipate based on the projections and things of that nature. While volume one, the first part of the plan is how do we intend to anticipate and mitigate this growth? What do we do? In front of you, the only other change that Wyatt does not have, and I discussed with you all earlier, is the timelines for the goals and implementation strategies. Most of them, as I stated, were ongoing as we signed, but also some of them were one to two years out, two to four years out, as Jeff mentioned with the budget retreat. Most of those goals are one to two years because it involves rewriting Unified Development Orders to make sure we get some good, solid, strong rules in here to make sure the development is what we'd like to see it, whether it be aesthetically or from a more engineering standpoint. What do we want to see? Do we want to see higher-quality construction materials? Do we want to see better-looking things, whatever that may look like, more low-country feel, brick, glass, what? And on top of that, where do we want our uses to go? So a lot of this is, a lot of those implementation strategies are that. And without being said, I'll turn it over to Wyatt.
Good evening. Welcome back. I know the last time we all met, I believe, was in February or March. So took a while, but we're here for the second reading in the public hearing. So I'm going to go through things very quickly. This is a refresher, and it also is kind of a summary of the revisions that have taken place since the February/March meeting. It's about ten slides, going to be really brief. The handouts that we provided, we have the volume one, which is the implementation strategies, volume two, which are the existing conditions, and then we have a one-pager, which is just a summary of all the changes that, the substantial changes, I'll say, that we did between these two drafts. So on the summary page, you can see that where the old page was and then where the new page was, so you can pretty easily navigate through and see what changes really took place. So, all right. So what we'll be going over tonight, as I said, you know, was a comp plan, just a refresher, planning process, the guiding principles. Then we'll go into the revision summary. We'll start with volume two, just because those are kind of just more the really minor changes that we just updated. And then we'll go into volume one, which is a little bit more of the policy change. And then we'll have a open discussion with the council. So what is a comp plan? As I mentioned, it's a long-range planning document that provides guidance for policies and implemented through zoning and land development decisions. A comp plan includes a vision statement, a set of goals or guiding principles, a set of existing conditions, which includes ten elements, which is what the volume two is, and implementation strategy, and then a future land use map. So in 2017, that was, the town conducted a full ten-year review. Given the growth that the town has had since then, you guys opted to do another ten-year review, which is why this process took a little bit longer than what was required, which was just a five-year update. So the planning process, this slide may look a little bit familiar. Last time we were on the eight out of nine boxes, now we're on the ninth box. So I won't go through all this just because they're, you know, as I said, it's just a repeat, but we are in the very final stage. So, you know, depending on how tonight goes, you know, the plan may be adopted and, you know, and that becomes the, kind of the law of the land, I guess you could say. And, you know, when Justin was talking about the, you know, 2017 plan, you know, after tonight, if it is adopted, you guys will start referencing this plan. Here are the six guiding principles. Again, I won't go through all of them just because we've seen these for about two years now, so they haven't changed really at all. So we have, you know, maintain the family-oriented small-town feel, you have the quality and range of public services, support economic development, you know, kind of the basic guiding principles that the town wants to pursue. And then here we go into the revision summary. So I started with volume two, just because, like I said, there's the more minor updates. It wasn't anything changing policy-wise. It was more just, you know, we maybe added some, added a section here, there, you can see on the right, we added a rail and freight section as well as a map to show that infrastructure. We called it out in a previous section, we're like, hey, we might want to add it here, too. So that's one example of a change. We added a preface to help explain some of the demographic changes that we added throughout, or that we had throughout the plan. That was just more of a, you know, explanatory type of thing. We updated the population projections based on the discussion we had at last meeting. And then we also updated the future housing projections based on the population projections. And then we revised some of the floodplain stuff just to make it a little bit more easier to understand. We used a lot of jargon to begin with. Now we kind of, you know, smoothed things out a little bit. And since it's talked about in two different sections, we wanted to make sure we're not repeating ourselves, you know, we have new information in each section. This is beginning with volume one, so we, I wanted to just do a really quick recap of the future land use map. So we have ten future land use designations proposed. We have five in the expansion area, which includes one new designation, the Town Character Mix Use, that's only in the expansion area. And then we have two overlay zones, the mix-use overlay and the highway commercial overlay. And the map to the right is the most recent map that we have in the plan, and that is, will reflect. This is the small change that we mentioned in the very beginning of the summary. So based on discussions with staff, I'm sorry, town staff, there was just a slight change to the expansion area. So before, in the February draft, that area, does this have a pointer? No, no, okay, sorry. The area highlighted in the black on the bottom of the circles used to be, what does it say? Town Character Residential after discussion. It was suggested that maybe that become Town Character Mix Use. So that is a policy change, so it's something we didn't want to just kind of blanket over and just do. So that's why we included it in the summary of changes. So that is the only change really in volume one that occurred, and that's really the whole summary of changes. I just want to, you know, before we go into the open discussion, kind of go through the process of what happens now. During the open discussion, town council can ask any questions. We can, you know, Justin and I will be able to answer to the best of our abilities afterwards. It could go into a public hearing. Depending on that, you guys can make a motion to approve, you know, just a plan outright. You can send it, you know, you can have one more reading. You can have the option, we approve this based on these conditions, and you lay them all out. So that way, we know kind of the process moving forward. So if you see anything in the revision summary that you're like, hey, I don't agree with that, then you can put that condition on the approval saying, we approve this except for this one change. We don't want that in there. So stuff like that, you guys can take into consideration. So I encourage you to read through the summary. I know it's one page, but there's a lot of line items. I would focus mostly on kind of the bigger-ticket items, you know, if it just says, you know, add a map, that's not really, you know, a substantial change. But what if it's adding a section, or if it's updating the housing charts, the population projections, the future land, or the future housing projections? Those are more the things that we would want you to kind of focus on. And then again, the future land use, the volume one, that's really the big policy change that BCD COG staff and town staff both, you know, work together on. That's open for council discussions.
Anyone have any discussions, questions?
I do have one question for you.
Yes.
In volume two, page seven. The chart thirteen, or figure thirteen, if you will.
Yes.
Why, I guess, we're looking at a dramatic decline in the age of the housing stock from 2019 till basically current. Can you explain that? I mean, that's less newer homes being built in the area. Is that the way I'm interpreting that?
So the way the census reports the ages, so if it's, if it's built, you know, if it has a timestamp of 2020, it's not necessarily that it's decreasing homes. Obviously, the town is increasing the amount of homes, it's just during that little bit of, that little time period, it's reported that homes are being built during that. And it's based on building codes, I'm sorry, building permits. So if the census, if Berkeley County isn't up to date on the building permits, then it might not reflect the most up-to-date data. But that number, if I'm, is it on? That number is only for two years. So it's not that it's decreasing by a ton, it's just all the other years are ten-year increments. It's just that little bit's only two years because that's all that's reported.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you.
It's also important to note COVID and interest rates, as well as other things, have led those two years to probably be pretty skewed compared to what we're seeing today.
Yeah, because I looked at that and then compared it to the pie chart on page four, and that's showing that thirty-two percent of our residents as of 2020, I guess this information's as of, from 2018 to 2022, it's indicating thirty-two percent of our residents here are new residents.
Correct.
And that's a fair statement. A third of Monk's Corner is now newly.
And I, when we looked at the data, we looked at the data for the housing stock. Census does report ten-year increments, but we did look a little bit deeper. After the recession in 2009, 2010, you know, most of the units in Monk's Corner were probably built, you know, 2015 or after, right? So, you know, when we say, you know, the past five years, that's, you know, a lot of that thirty-five, you know, a third of the town being built in that ten-year period, probably more like a five-year period, right? And that's where that, you know, this thirty-two percent comes into play because they were probably being built 2015, 2016, 2017. People then moved in 2018, 1920, before things started to slow down, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because that's not the way I read that. The way that I read that was they moved in the past five years. So that's not necessarily thirty-two percent of new residents coming in. They just, that's thirty-two percent of the people have moved to a new home in the last five years, correct?
Not necessarily new home, new resident. So it could be, obviously, we have an aging population, it could be a flipover of nineteen-seventies home, but yes, it's, that's the way I read it as well.
It's very, given the population, or given the housing stock, it's more likely that they're new residents, but yet it is just a new, you know, like if I moved to Monk's Corner, if it's an older house, it's, I'm still a new resident. So, but the fraction of that's probably a little bit smaller than, you know, just a brand-new residence and brand-new homes.
I just didn't want everybody to panic that a third of the people just moved here five years ago, because that can be a little off there. That's correct, the way, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. At this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Hearing, none. I close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize, I want to be clear. The motion, are we motioning to accept the changes as presented tonight for the document that Wyatt passed out?
Okay, so a motion to accept the document as with the changes made tonight. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. That passes. All right, thank you all. All right. No one signed up for public input tonight. So now, executive session, council may take action regarding matters discussed, discussion of receipt of legal advice, and discussion of appointment related to hearing business license appeals. Also, negotiations for a proposed contractual agreement related to the intersection improvements at Fox Bank Boulevard and Highway fifty-two. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to authorize